We are in order. So as we get started, there's one thing that is not on the agenda that I'm going to do right away. Mr. Ryan Reeder, could you meet us in the well, please? Everyone may not know. Everyone may not be aware, this is Ryan Reeder. He has worked diligently with us and recording our reads and making sure they're online. He's got a touch of his body. Excellent man. This is his last night. If you want to reach him, well, tell us again where you're headed to the university.
The University, yes, sir. For music education.
Music education. Ryan Reeder is very grateful for what he has done for our citizens and we want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Best wishes to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, buddy. Was it? Thank you, Al. It's written on my mind, buddy. Thank you. We'll move into public comments section, item 2A regarding general and non-agenda items. Anyone, I don't have anybody that has signed up prior. If anyone would like to address this commission, you may do so by approaching, stating your name. You have three minutes.
Thursday, April 18th, 2002, voters should pick their poison. It's either a wheel tax or a property tax, Commission Chair says. That came out just before the referendum. Letting the people vote on a wheel tax or letting it expire. Of course, kind of like a rock and a hard place, it's not exactly, wheel tax or not a wheel tax, it's wheel tax or property tax. The voters picked the wheel tax and so the temporary wheel tax continued. But what is unique about this is, as I said, this was April 2002. The referendum was in May 2002. And remember this, it's either a wheel tax or a property tax? Well, actually, that commission, a little over four months later, approves a property tax hike. This was saying fifteen cents property tax or a wheel tax. The voters voted for the wheel tax and then the commission came back and said, "We're going to give you another poison. We're going to give you that other poison of a fifteen cent property tax hike." And now you're looking and talking about a wheel tax increase. Eighty-five percent wheel tax increase from twenty-seven, another twenty-three, to fifty dollars total. What is sad is that there's no reason to have a wheel tax increase for paving. We absolutely need paving. We've needed it for a long time. You talk about something that's been kicked down the road, that's it. But we don't have to have a wheel tax to do the paving. At your last meeting, June 29th, Commissioner Howell presented a proposal that would have provided more money than the twenty-three dollar wheel tax would for paving, simply by doing exactly what Mr. Britton did, moving property tax, substituting sales tax, school system as whole, and putting 2.2 million into paving. How anybody could vote against that is beyond me, but it happened. But I hope you'll look at it more closely and reconsider and do what's right for the people.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission?
My name is Eddie Cox, 1804 Bolton Ridge Mountain. We discussed all this wheel tax, every one of you did. And the wheel tax is going to be good because how many people driving on the road, go up here and ask Peggy, how many license plates have been sold in a year? How many people don't pay the taxes on the wheel, on property taxes because they don't have property? And too many people on the road, and you know you're going to get your money on the wheel tax because you're driving on the road and people's got no houses, no property, and everything. And the second thing, when you come out in a tribute, I think you should discuss it, not put it in a paper like some people does. Discuss it. You're all the family right here, not in the newspaper. If you did, you'd have this whole place packed full of people coming here and talking to y'all. But look how many is in here right now. I see a few people, there'll have to be in here tonight. But I mean, you think people don't hear about the taxes now? Watch Green County guy, they got thirty-eight cents on their wheel, on the property tax. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Dan Pillegrin, 72, 90 Sweetire Drive. Know we, a couple of months ago, we voted for the resolution with the noise. I think it's time we start taking the next step, you know, from the ordinance or whatever we have to do. And also, everybody talking about the wheel tax. I'm not too familiar with it, but where are we at on getting this new infrastructure? Two trillion dollars they voted on in Congress. Do we get extra money from this? I think people should ask the state, where is it going? And we should try to get some of that money before we think about raising taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission on non-agenda items? Non-agenda is where we're at at the moment.
I want to talk about the wheel tax.
Okay.
Gwen Holden. I would like for y'all to consider what Peggy Howell said. And I'd like for y'all to consider these people that are on fixed income and people that are homeless and people that don't have jobs, that can't afford that, that can't afford to buy their tanks. I think what Peggy Howell did was good. She even dropped it down to seven cents and you still couldn't even do that. You know, I've told you and told you, all the taxpayers want is their roads fixed. That's it. That's all they're asking for. And you know what? We can do everything for unlawful abiding citizens, but we can't help the people that abide the law and pay their taxes and go to work every day. It's a shame. You should be ashamed of yourself. We've got hardworking people in this county. They need a break. They need a break. Give them one. Think about it. Please.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission on non-agenda? Yes, sir.
Mike Johncox, 3121, Three Springs Road. I'm not in favor of the wheel tax, especially since, I know I'm not the only one that has multiple vehicles. I only drive one. I think there ought to be some compromise and I think y'all ought to compromise. Just because something's put forward doesn't mean it has to go through the way it's put forward. You know, I, I'm, twenty-three dollars isn't going to bankrupt me, but when you add on the twenty-seven, then you add on the state share, and you've got three, four vehicles, you only drive one. You know, something, something's not right. And you've got plenty of other vehicles that are doing the damage to the roads. You know, you've got a lot of business you're talking, coming in here, maybe impact them somehow, you know, for their tractor-trailers tearing up the roads or whatever. But you know, you need to look at other options instead of just taxing the citizens just because you want to tax and spend. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else for this portion of non-agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item 2B. Anyone, public comment wise, regarding agenda items? You have three minutes. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to Calendar and Rules Report, Chairman Doty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 4A is approval of the consent calendar items, and I put that in form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Chairman Doty.
Yes, ma'am.
No, ma'am, you need to address the chair at this time.
I apologize.
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Ketchow.
Yes.
Could we pull the minutes from the consent calendar for discussion, please?
Yes, ma'am, we can. We'll pull the minutes. Tell me exactly what you want.
The minutes do not show the handouts that Ms. Howell, Commissioner Howell, gave last meeting for the sake of transparency, so that all citizens will have the opportunity to see what was given for the simple fact, we had the privilege of looking at it, but none of the citizens of Hammond County had that opportunity. I'd like to see it included in the minutes for a matter of record, sir.
Yes, ma'am, we will pull that and consider that in our next section. So we have, we will be pulling the consent, from consent counter, the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Everybody understand? We will move that directly to item 5A. Any other questions? Any other discussion on motion 4A, approval of consent counter minus the minutes of the previous meeting? Let's vote this motion, please.
Item 4A, twelve yeas, one nae.
This motion passes.
Item 4B is approval of the regular calendar items, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion on the regular calendar items? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Item 4B, thirteen yeas, zero nae.
This motion passes. We will now move directly into items removed from consent counter. Commissioner Green just had the minutes removed. Commissioner Green, you have the floor.
In all fairness to the public and transparency, they did not have the opportunity to see the handouts that we as commissioners had the liberty to see. I would like to see that included in the minutes as a matter of record so that all Hammond County citizens can see what was proposed and what was voted on.
Yes, ma'am. So is that a form of a motion or?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to include the handouts that Ms. Howell had prepared for our meeting. Is there a second for this to be added?
Second.
We have a second. Commissioner Howell, so this is off the board, ladies? Okay, we have a motion. Ms. Green, we have a second. Commissioner Howell, to add these items to the minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
Chris Ketchow.
Aye.
Thomas Doty.
Yes.
Edna Green.
Yes.
Stan Horne.
Yes.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Huntsman.
Yes.
Peggy Howell.
Yes.
Rodney Long.
Yes.
Mike Reed.
Yes.
Mike Richardson.
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith.
Yes.
Kyle Walker.
Yes.
Motion passes. So we, these handouts will be added. It was already noted in the minutes that that failed as far as motions, and it is duly noted in the minutes that that motion failed. So, yes. We will now move on. Item 6A, consent counter, I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Mr. Horner? Do we need, yeah, there we go. Motion. And Mr. Doty is second. Is there any discussion? Now, just, just for clarification, what we just did is now added to this consent counter. Any discussion? Let's vote this motion.
Item 6A, thirteen yeas, zero nae.
That motion passes. We will now recess as a Hammond County legislative body and open up for a public hearing for item A, Resolution 23, is planning here? Yes, I have seen one. Josh, or, okay. Resolution 2332, a resolution to amend the Hammond County zoning resolution specifically Article 9, Section 9.7, the Environmental Industrial District I-2. Is there anyone that would like to approach and discuss this resolution? Seeing none, we will now move to item 7B as part of the open public hearing. Resolution 2333, a resolution to amend the Hammond County zoning resolution specifically Article 9, wireless telecommunication towers and antenna. Is there anyone that would like to address this in our open hearing? Seeing none, we will now close the public hearing and reconvene as the Hammond County legislative body. Item 8A, Resolution 2332, a resolution to amend the Hammond County zoning resolution specifically Article 9, Section 9.7, the Environmental Industrial District I-2. I need a motion for that.
Motion.
We have a motion, Mr. Richardson. And we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Item 8A, thirteen yeas, zero nae.
And this motion passes. Item 8B, Resolution 2333, a resolution to amend the Hammond County zoning resolution specifically Article 9, wireless telecommunication towers and antenna. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion. Commissioner Doty, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Item 8B, thirteen yeas, zero nae.
And that motion passes. We will now move to item 9A, Justice Center Public Safety Committee Chairman Horner, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 9A, change order number 13 for forty-eight thousand, sixty dollars, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion on the floor and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 8, ten yeas, three nae.
And this motion passes.
So moved.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Horner. We now move to item 10, Finance Committee Chairman Hahn, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 10A, memorandum of understanding among the Hammond County legislative body, Road Commission, and Highway Department regarding the need for road repairs and resurfacing. I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 10A, twelve yeas, one nae.
This motion passes.
Item 10B, Resolution 2334, a resolution of the governing body of Hammond County, Tennessee, authorizing the issuance of sale and payment of Hammond County interfund capital outlay notes not to exceed five hundred sixty thousand dollars. I make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Twelve yeas, one nae.
This motion passes.
Item 10C, the Axon contract, and I make that motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion on the Axon contract? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Yeah, something, something isn't right.
I have a nut hole.
Hit the cross. Internet went off. Hang on a second.
Bear with us just a moment. Mike Reed, Mr. Neesmith, and Mr. Huntsman. I believe Mr. Huntsman just came on. Mr. Reed, somebody help Mr. Reed down there. Mr. Neesmith is all asleep. Okay. That's fine. Bear with us, folks. We had one of our handhelds go down. We've had some internet issues today. Everybody's back online but one.
Got them all with mine fixed. I'll vote yes, and that way you go ahead.
We need to hold up. We need to hold up here just to make sure. Everybody else has had to vote on the board, we'll have to see what we can do.
Thirteen yeas, zero nae.
And this motion passes.
Item 10D, High Tech Systems Incorporated contract, I make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
10D, thirteen yeas, zero nae.
And this motion passes.
Item 10EI, or one rather, Fund 101, Sheriff's Department, sixty thousand dollars, I make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
10E, one, thirteen yeas, zero nae.
And this motion passes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Hahn. We will now move into item 11, Real Estate Committee Chairman, Mr. Reed, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 11A, August tax sale list, I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion on the August tax sale list? Seeing none, let's vote this motion.
11A, thirteen yeas, zero nae.
Motion passes. Thank you, Chairman Reed. Folks, we've come down, I guess, one of the quickest ones we could have this year. We've got a lot of work ahead of us. Just to, just to let you know, there's more to come. We have concluded our business tonight. Commissioner Howell has asked for me to allow her a moment to speak, so.
Thank you, sir. When the meeting, before the budget meeting, or maybe it was during, anyway, it looked like money was going to be taken away from the school system. And when I went back and looked at their proposed budget, if they asked for, and they did for more.
did for more egg money because we don't know the price of eggs, that was really nutrition. Hamlin County property, uh, taxpayers said, yes, we'll, we'll love that nutrition amount you need. We didn't know what diesel fuel was gonna, you know, we still don't. When they asked for an increase, Hamlin County property taxpayers said, okay, and elected officials, we said, okay, we'll do that. And, uh, I remember Mr. Bunch coming up and saying, well, the importance of that sales tax, that extra that comes in is for keeping, you know, if the door hinges break or somebody knocks on a window. And then I got to look at through this, and we have maintenance of effort. And, um, I had a chat with Ms. Africa, and I said, what in the world is that? And that's for the hinges and the glass and the doorknobs and things that happen in everyday where in tear at schools. And so I just want to make sure that we all understand that when they said, we need Hamlin County property tax owners and elected officials said, yes, siree, Bob, we'll do it, and we did. And that's important for them to, for citizens to know that if we figure out some other way to pay for roads, it isn't on the back of the school system. What they asked for, by golly, we came up with happily, willingly, and, and, and there it is. So thank you, sir, that's what I needed to say.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Commissioner Neesmith has asked to speak.
Well, this doesn't have anything to do with taxes, but this, this coming Saturday night, it's been one year since I stopped down to Red Barn to listen to the loud noise. It's been one year we've not put that situation to bed yet. We don't have a, we don't have excess noise, we don't know what that number is. Right, Thomas? Thomas asked for that, never did get it, and they don't know what the number's gonna be. So I think these people that, you know, a year later, we don't have this thing put to bed. And what we, what the commission did do, they took all the decimal meters and got them on all the same calibrations. But I just bought a new one, and on the box it says calibration plus or minus 1.5. So it's a mechanical thing, you're not gonna get everyone other the same. But you've got to have a number to start with. You can't have a noise level of 15 or 10. Same way we city did on barking dogs. Barking dogs, they never done nothing. Well, the chief of police turned it over to the animal control. Now the animal control goes out there and writes citations. Now, I don't know if, if a bulldog barks louder than a chihuahua or not, but these people down in, down to Red Barn, they deserve better than what we're doing. It's been a year, we've done nothing. We've not done one thing. And this county can do everything. We can, we can set taxes, we can spend money here, spend money there, we can do what we want to, and we can make a resolution that the same thing that Dandridge, Tennessee did. Dandridge has got it, I've talked to them two or three times, and they've got it for at the, at the amplifier, their noise cannot be over 8.5. And 8.5 is pretty loud. Right now, I'm talking, I'm over 8. You can take that meter and turn on your television, that'll tell you what 10 is. But when you get 15 musical instruments going and you got a big bass pushing it way up, it's gonna do it. But those, those people deserve better than this. They, there's a woman down there that goes and gets a motel room every Saturday night so she can rent, and she don't deserve that. And, and glasses shaking in people's cabinets, they don't deserve that either. I've been there, Bill Britton's been there, I don't know if anybody else been there or not, but I've been down there and heard it. The whole key to the whole thing, if this man owns that business, he lives on west, in middle Tennessee, he's not up here much, but he's got it, he's making money good, and that, that's going on. But you cannot let anybody run, if you're in a music business, you can't let them run your sound for you. In my contracts, I've got it, they answer to me. If that music's too loud and I've got a neighbor that lives 50 foot from me, he'll call and say, why ain't you a little bit loud? I'll go turn it, I'll go turn it down. And last year, the man told me, he says, I can't turn it down, turn it down anymore. I said, well, I can turn it down. He said, how you gonna do that? I said, I'll pull your breaker. Because if my music's too loud, I'll cut them off. I'll put them out of business. But I done got my money for it. And the, but it's not the people that's renting these things that's doing it. It's these bands that's doing it. And I talked to a band out of Texas, these old men come up here, one of them's a Vietnam veteran. I said, how come these people, they broke, come up here, nine people in a Mercedes van, they come up here, and I said, how come this, this music's so loud and yours is not? He said, a lot of times when the music's so bad, they ground it out with noise. And that's just, you can't understand a word they're saying. But, but I told him I'll pull their breaker, but you've got to run it like your business, just exactly like your business, any business.
Thank you, Mr. Neesmith.
But they need, we need to do something, I don't know what, if we're gonna kick this thing around again for another year or not, but they, we need to do something.
Thank you, Mr. Neesmith. Ms. Green.
Thank you. I'd like to add a word to what Commissioner Howe said. By the sheet that Mayor Britton, Britton provided to us that showed what they got for 2020, 2021, we have more than exceeded our maintenance of effort. So to be honest with you, they, they should have a slush fund there to a certain extent besides what they got from the state. And I don't remember if it was 31 million or 13 million, but it was a big number. So my thoughts are, our schools are very well taken care of. We just don't need to burden our taxpayers anymore. They need a break. And the economy we're in, especially older folks, and I know you folks don't like to hear it, but people that are on a restricted income, in other words, self-security, they're struggling. So we just need to be, consider things and work to do what's best for Hamlin County citizens, just like, and I honor you for what you prayed earlier. We need to do what's best for Hamlin County citizens, and I for one appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Doty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just a quick note on what was discussed about the sales tax money in the schools and everything. Commissioner Howe's correct. We do not question when the school system comes and needs money for eggs or needs money to increase diesel fuel. But that's because it's sparsely that they come and ask for it. The reason that it's sparse is because they get this extra money that's coming from the sales tax. They told that here. They do use it for that. Maintenance of effort, yes, there is line items in there to replace things, but it's not just that that they use it for. They use it for their everyday budget as well, to pay salaries, to keep the lights on, because they have to pay utilities just like we do. But again, the reason that we've never questioned is because they don't come very often, because they do manage, and they manage by using the additional sales tax revenue that comes in that is being proposed to take out to, to pay for the roads. One other quick thing, Mr. Neesmith, um, not to contradict your statement, but we have worked on it and we have done a few things, we've looked into a few items. I think we still have more to go. I think we, we did our, uh, there's a list of understanding to where we require a person to be able to appreciate their home and to live in peace and enjoyment. That was just a first step. We have looked into what is required as far as how much noise and such, and it's just an ongoing process. It's not a cut and dry thing. Mr. Richardson has worked on that diligently, and we're, it's still an ongoing project. We're still, we're still digging into it. But I appreciate you keeping it on our, uh, our radar. I would love to see it, but I don't want to see something that can be contradicted.
I remember the statement you made, what's excessive?
Yeah, it is.
That was what I was getting at.
Yeah, I understand, and we need to find that so that our sheriff's department can, um, make an informed decision when they do.
Yeah.
Issue a citation or whatever that may be.
If you don't have that magic number, you can't do anything.
Exactly. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Doty, and Commissioner Long.
I'm on a lighter note tonight.
Yes, sir.
We've got a commissioner's birthday today.
Oh, really?
Recognize his birthday.
Let's go for it.
Mr. Reed.
Oh, my goodness. Anybody want to lead us in happy birthday?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Bronson. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you to everybody but Rodney.
All right, folks, um, let's take note of item 12, our next, um, meeting, August, committee meetings, Monday, August the 14th. Our next commission meeting, Thursday, August 24th. Leave your notebooks, and we are adjourned.